Ben.
I now have 5:35. We're going to call the Planning and Zoning Committee together with Mrs. Skinner to discuss solar energy developments. Mrs. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have brought a draft, that's all this is, to council, to look into a resolution opposing solar that is coming around the city of Mount Vernon. I think this is relevant because there is also 100 acres within the city that would be part of this, which I was unaware of until quite recently. That 100 acres would also house the substation for at least part of this solar development. And I think that as this county seat, it's important for the city to at least acknowledge a highly contentious thing that is happening around us. I have advocated up here to put in high-density housing, and one argument that I always make for high-density housing is I want to preserve the agricultural integrity that Knox County has. And I think that if I sit by as hundreds and hundreds of acres are gobbled up to solar, I am not sending the same message. So I do think that it's all about balance. But I have asked some individuals who have been advocating against this within the county to have some time to speak tonight. There are some political candidates here, but I have said that this is not going to be a place for political candidates to speak. I appreciate them being passionate about this and coming out, but for city council, that's not what the intention is here. So we're just going to have some individuals talk about it, give their perspective, and then have council just discuss. So, Ben, are you wanting to start?
I can.
Well, I called on you, so now you have to.
Yeah, I will be happy to do so. Good evening. My name is-
Name and address, please.
Yes. My name is Ben Dean. I live at 6041 Sharp Road, Mount Vernon, Ohio, just a couple miles outside of town. Previously, a resident of 1015 West Vine Street for 13 years, so a longtime local resident. Moved here in 2002 as a college student, and my roots got sunk into the soil, you could say. And I've been here for now 21-plus years. There is a lot that I could say about this, and I'm not sure, you know, it's difficult on an issue like this to figure out what matters, you know, to the political leaders. What's important for you guys here? Because there's so many different angles to this issue. And there's questions of property rights, there's questions of global warming, climate change, and, you know, what's our responsibility as a community to these sorts of issues? And all of those things are really important. But one of the things I'll start off by speaking to, just briefly at a high level, and then I'll share some of my personal experience here, is when it comes to solar energy, it is unfortunately relatively inefficient in a lot of different ways. It's not just inefficient in the sense that solar panels do not convert energy at a high rate, they're 20% to 25% efficient. That's not the biggest issue here. The issue is because of that, they require large amounts of land to produce a significant amount of energy in order to make them economically viable. So that's why a project like the Fraser Solar Project, which is being slated to be 120 megawatts, needs 840 acres in order to produce that much energy. Now, let's be clear about that, though. That's its maximum capacity, is 120 megawatts. It will only achieve that maximum capacity roughly 25% of the year. So that's another way in which solar is rather inefficient. It will only produce at its maximum rate about 25% of the year. But the other problem here is, and I mentioned the land, it's very inefficient on the land use side, right? 840 acres produce that amount of energy. As a comparison, and I'm not an advocate of any other types of energy, but as a comparison, a natural gas facility takes up roughly around 60 acres or so, 30 to 60, and will produce 600 megawatts of energy. So if you do the math on that, right, the amount of energy produced per acre is vastly different with other sources of energy. And the other one I want you to consider is the efficiency of job creation, all right? So solar utilities do not produce that much jobs or economic activity based on their size. After construction, and the solar developer will say they will have, they'll create 200 construction jobs, but after the construction, once the facility's running, most likely at most, there will be five new jobs. And some studies have indicated with that loss of farmland, you might be losing two to three jobs right there. So you'll be looking at a net increase of two to three jobs. Do the math there. Two to three jobs created on 840 acres. There seems, if we're concerned about jobs, if we're concerned about energy, if we're concerned about a lot of these things, it seems like there might be a better way, a more efficient way to solve some of these problems. I have a lot more I could say, and if you guys are interested in getting into all the details on the different concerns and issues, I would be happy to provide any additional information you need. But what I want to kind of point back to here, as I wrap up my time, is I've recently become aware of two different kinds of conservancies, two different organizations. There's the Flander-Chase Conservancy, which is focused on preserving land around Kenyon. And then there's the Al Creek Conservancy, which is working to preserve land in Knox County generally. And when you look at their mission statements, they say something I think that's very relevant here. Their missions are to protect the natural beauty of farms, woodlands, waters, and open spaces surrounding Kenyon College in the case of Flander, or just in Knox County generally in the case of Al Creek. Do we believe that these things are actually worth preserving? Is it actually worth it to us to take the time, put in the effort, the energy, the time to understand these things, to actually preserve the natural beauty, farms, woodlands, waters, and open spaces in our community? If so, then you have to really take a long, hard look at utility-scale solar and say, does, in what way, does this actually fulfill that desire? Does it actually preserve these things? And if you look at it clearly as what it is, you'd have to say, no. It does not preserve farmland. It does not preserve open spaces. It does not preserve woodlands and waters and all of those things, right? It puts all of those things at risk. So I just encourage you to really take your time to study this if you need to. But ultimately, you know, in my own research and where I stand, and to be efficient with your time, I'll just say, encourage you to really write a resolution against this. It's one of the primary ways that you guys will be able to have a voice in the process at all, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there someone else who had planned to speak? I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll cut you off by just turning off your mic.
That'll work. My name is Jared Yost. I live at 14701 Sycamore Road. I also have property at 15301 Sycamore Road, which will be adjacent to one of these solar fields if it goes through. I want to piggyback on a question I was asked before the meeting, and that was, is this project a done deal? No, it's not. Regardless of what people say, this project is not done. It does not have its certificate from the Ohio Power Siding Board. There's still a lot of steps that have to go through, and this can still be stopped, okay? And by writing a resolution and voicing your opinion, that's one way to help that. So like Ben said, I could honestly probably talk for hours about the negatives and downfalls of solar, but I'll try to jump through to the ones that I think is going to affect the city the most, okay? This land is going to be locked in for 30 to 40 years. Can you tell me what, oops, can you tell me what you think Mount Vernon will look like 30 to 40 years from now? What direction will it grow? What's the impact of MENTEL going to have on the city of Mount Vernon? Do we really want land that could in the future be used for development and expansion, even land that's not in the city yet be annexed in? Do you want it tied up in solar panels for the next 30 to 40 years, or could it be used for better purposes such as housing? You have negatives that even if it were to be installed, could be detrimental to the city of Mount Vernon, such as flooding. Ohio is behind the eight ball on setting solar panels as an impervious surface. Many other states do, because they concentrate water runoff in a very small area on the ground, and that ground is often very compacted, which is why if you research any installations in Ohio, you'll see that they often flood, which is going to cause issues if you were to expand the sewer and stormwater containment out in that direction. You're going to have a lot of that water to deal with that would not be getting absorbed into the ground. And then you talk about toxic materials. Solar panels are just fine when they're intact. Seals go bad, they get cracked, broken, and then you have things that can leach in the ground. And then, once again, if you were to have stormwater or sewer out in that area, that could also be entering into your wastewater system. And I could stop there if anybody has any questions.
So one of my questions would be, what can citizens of Mount Vernon, or even Knox County, we represent city residents here, but what can people specifically do to combat this current project that is going to get voted on eventually?
The two most important things for them to do is to email or write the Ohio Power Siding Board and provide a comment to them, which will become part of the docket. But then also, on April 4th, there will be a public hearing by the Ohio Power Siding Board at the Memorial Theater. Starts at 5:00. Anybody that comes will be given the opportunity to speak. You have five minutes to speak. You'll sign a paper, and they will not stop until everybody gets to speak. That holds a tremendous amount of weight when it comes to making a decision on whether to approve or to deny a project. They want to hear from the local community.
Okay. We can get that information posted on our site possibly, or Facebook page, or whatever we do?
I don't think that's for the city probably to post that, but I think any of council that would personally want to post that, that would be fine. But without the city making a resolution, I don't think that that would be an appropriate move for the city to post that.
What is this going to do to the land?
There's a lot of contention about that. The worst part of what it does to the land is that we've seen at other installations, they work nonstop. It doesn't matter whether it's been raining, whether it's dry, and they're using heavy equipment. All the farmers, so several townships have actually went and visited other installations, and I highly recommend everybody do that, because it'll make you sick when you actually see one in person. These farmers tell me, they go, there's no way this land's going to be farmable without a tremendous amount of work, because it compacts it so bad that it would take years for any crops to prosper there again. It would almost have to be ripped up and completely fluffed back up before it would be production land again.
So after 30 to 40 years?
Yeah, after 30 to 40 years, even after they rip everything out, it's still compacted, because there's nothing there uncompacting it. So even after they rip everything out, the likelihood of it being farmable right away is slim to none. It would take a tremendous amount of work to turn it into farmable land. Reducing soil compaction's at one of the top of the list for all farmers. My father and I farmed outside of Utica, and you just don't go in the field when it's wet. But these contractors obviously are deadline, they don't care, and this is just horrible soil compaction.
Does anyone else on council have questions right now?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
And I just started doing some more research since I just found out last week that portion of this was in the city.
Mm-hmm.
So I have questions about, and I read, was it Senate Bill 52?
Correct, yep.
I read that. It appears that the city did not have any leeway. It's up to the county commissioners to declare areas of the county to be solar or wind energy-free. But as far as things go, like within the city limits, is there stormwater issues? Maybe that's a better question for Rob or for the engineering office, as far as do they have to adhere to city stormwater?
No.
Permits or anything?
Nope.
Okay.
And that's my belief as well. You are almost powerless over this.
So our only avenue is to have a resolution, similar to what Circleville did in other communities?
That's correct. And even though that can, you know, does not carry any legal authority, it's still an official stance and lets people know where you stand. And per the commissioners, obviously, even when they ban solar, it does not affect Mount Vernon. That's only the unincorporated areas of-
Only unincorporated, yeah.
Correct.
Yep. So municipalities or cities are just open?
That's correct. It appears that was completely overlooked when it come to Senate Bill 52.
So I have a question. Resolutions like this or refusals of solar, have these happened in other places around the country? Do you have a number of how many of those have happened?
I do not have a number of how many of those have happened. There is a website and database for people who have signed into either zoning or resolutions stopping these projects. And I could find it and get it to you. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but there is somebody who is keeping track of all of those. Many, many townships and counties have, even Ohio, especially ones who've already had a project. Many counties who have allowed an installation, after they've had it and dealt with the issues, have went back and banned solar after the fact, because they said they never want to have another one again.
Well, thank you for your time and for coming to council. I appreciate it. I'm sure we'll have more questions. If you can share your info with me, I can-
Sure.
-get it out to council.
I'd be happy to. Thank you for your time.
And council, we have just a couple more minutes, and I'd like to give people some time if they would like to comment on it. I think Jay had some really relevant things that he wanted to talk about.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate the testimony. Also appreciate that there are some people in Mount Vernon who are for solar for various reasons, as Ben stated. But as Mr. Yost brought up, I think we, Mount Vernon Council has to be very careful how we address this issue. There are a lot of reasons to be opposed to solar if you are so inclined. The noise pollution, the soil compaction, the stormwater, all of those things are concerning. But as Mr. Yost pointed out, talking about reduction in agricultural land, it might be, we have to be careful how we talk about that as a city, because we have indeed annexed in agricultural land, and we may in the future annex in agricultural land for economic development, either housing or another industry. So while this ordinance may be a good idea, I think we had to be very careful how we, that we address that we are opposed to this project, or we, that we are opposed to solar in this generation, rather than making the crux of our argument, reduction in agricultural land, because we may find ourselves on the other end of that when we are looking for some economic development around the city. Thank you for that.
Anybody else have comments?
I'm just not sure what clout this has. I'm not sure we're talking about, it's just a statement that the, that they can read, but it really has no clout? Is that what we're saying?
No, it's significant when the Ohio Power Siding Board will see what townships have moved forward with ordinances or resolutions. The county seat taking a stance on this would significantly move the needle on the argument.
Can I add to that, Bruce's follow-up? Before I retired from the state, I worked with the Power Siding Board with wind energy development on Lake Erie, and the Power Siding Board does care what local communities say. The meetings that I had with them myself, that was one of the questions that they were always asking, particularly with that and survey data about different things, because wind energy is different. But the Power Siding Board does deeply care, I think, about what the community says. So as far as the city council or the townships, they're going to weigh that. They've even said that, I think, from what I've read in the newspapers and in the news, they've said that. They want to hear from the community.
So they're going to decide by region, by county, what's going to happen? So it could be-
By project.
By project.
By project.
Okay.
Yes.
So Knox County may not have it, but Morrow County could, or something like that?
Yeah, that's up to the commissioners to decide the future of other solar projects in the county. But they're going to, the Power Siding Board, it's by project, by project.
Any other questions? I will take some of the suggestions into consideration and get with Rob about this draft later this week. But, thank you.
We're going to adjourn the Planning and Zoning Committee for solar energy development. We're going to move now to alley vacation. You want to take these separately?
I think we can take Abbott first and then Collins. I think we were supposed to have just 15 minutes for both together. This is much less contentious, so.
Because that's, yeah, you have quite a bit of time. You have a half an hour.
Am I supposed to say something, or are you just talking?
No, you can come forward and talk, and we'll probably have Brian talk about the vacation as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm Rebecca Abbott. I live at 100 Oak Street here in Mount Vernon. My neighbor Gordon Loveland couldn't be here tonight, but asked me to represent him too, because the alley is behind both of our properties. My purpose in wanting the alley vacation was because my landscape architect, who does organic, native-friendly pollinating plants and things, said that he wants to put in a special drain and landscape, all that area where the alley is right now, where the water's actually just running into the foundation of my garage and undermining my garage. And I would like to not commit the funds to that until I know for sure that that land is buying and not the city's, you know, I wouldn't have to rip it up someday. And then my neighbor Gordon Loveland's interest is that although he's staying at his property now, he had wanted to sell his house earlier, previously, and the guy interested in buying it gave up when he saw that there was an alley behind the house. And my neighbor said, no, no, you don't understand. There's no traffic there, there's no cars going through that, it's just grass. The city's not using it. And the guy still pulled out of the deal, said he didn't want any possibility of any traffic ever in a designated alley behind the house. So it's not actually, the alley isn't actually going anywhere, and so we'd appreciate having that vacated. Thank you.
Counsel, if I may, this was approved unanimously by the municipal planning commission after discussing utilities and with the public, public safety about needs to get behind this property. It's okay with us.
Thank you.
Brian, do you feel the need to comment on this one anymore? Okay.
Unless you want me to.
We've got half an hour, apparently.
Yeah. He brings his juggling balls.
Let me tell you about the plants I want.
She could go on for half an hour about the plants.
Counsel, as I was at that meeting, and I concur, and it went clearly, it was an easy decision for the municipal planning, and I recommend you go ahead and approve this. Show where they are.
Can I just ask, how many areas like this do we have around the city?
More than you'd think.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Leads us to the second committee meeting.
Yes.
Well, this one is different than like the second one, because this one, the alley, was originally just platted just for the, just for the few feet of the extension of these two properties. Most of the alleys go all the way through a block. This one just goes and then stops, and was never platted beyond that. Whereas the one we're going to deal with next was platted all the way through, and at one point they vacated part of it, but left the extension all the way out to the street. And actually, if you pull up the-
Yeah, so this one will make you see here, it didn't, this wasn't ever planned to go all the way through. It's just, for whatever reason, with these two houses.
Yeah.
If you want to show the other one, I can point you at.
And this one, actually, you can see it better on the submission from municipal planning. It shows the actual-
Go through that, Marsha.
It's attached to the legislation.
Go back to the legislation.
Yeah, go back to the legislation.
I think that it's behind each-
This is 2024-02 ordinance.
Yeah, because it's like, that's the alley, and each one is like this.
Okay.
2023, where it's like 47,000 pages.
Yeah, that's, it's the next one down. Yep, that's, yep. Yeah, keep scrolling up. So you see that? Yeah, that's it.
Right there, yes.
Okay.
And that's it. So there was never any alley beyond that.
This just makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think we're-
Otherwise, it's useless plot of land for the city.
I walk by there all the time, so I live just down the street.
Worthless alley.
Thank you for coming. Is it okay if we roll into the next one?
Yes.
We got, apparently it is.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't sure who was here for Collins, so.
Mary Collins, 610 East High Street, and I'm looking to vacate the alley. It runs-
Other way.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The alley between High and Vine Street, there's nothing on either side. It's just between that one block. And I have fences and bushes and things. I'd like to get out and have the alley vacated, so we know what's what. I can't get to one side of my garage, because it's cut off between bushes and fences that belong to the neighbor. But they come across the alley. They're, part of it is on my, on my property, but the rest of it crosses the whole alley. It's a six-foot wide alley. So it really wasn't made for anything going through, and there's never been anything, since I've known about the property, my aunt and uncle bought it back in the early 60s. And the other side is vacated also, so.
Oh, so half the alley is already vacated?
Yes.
Just south of the property line, the alley south of there.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this part has already been vacated. So the alley stops right there.
So we're approving the part above there?
Continuation of that, yeah. So.
Are you and your neighbor in agreement with all this?
He signed the okay to send it through, but he's never discussed anything with me.
So I'll start out the same way, do this judiciously. Municipal planning did the same process with this particular thing, looking at utilities, looking at public safety, unanimously approved sending this through from the perspective of the city. I have sent a letter, and if you would like, I can provide you that letter, to Mr. Whitaker, informing him that I believe his shed and fence do indeed fall into the alley. He would be required to move those. He is not inclined to do so. If we vacate that portion of the alley, then it becomes, I believe, a more of a civil matter between you and Mr. Whitaker. We have looked at, I have told him, you know, you would at that point need to produce permits and show that you were given those permissions. Those do not exist. These are facts.
What's before council tonight, though, is simply the vacation.
Yep. You do not need to contend with what they will have to-
Right.
-vacate themselves.
Okay. Well, I think we're good. Thank you for coming.
Words before us go.
Sing and dance for the next 20 minutes?
I thought we asked for 15 minutes for both together, so.
All right.
Okay, you ready to go on sustainability goals?
Sure.
All right.
So I met with the mayor about a piece of legislation that went through last year, Sustainability 2050, and asked him to kind of present about what can be achieved through that legislation, the type of grants that we can get, to hear from our engineering department, and how that fits with what the city is already doing, kind of to paint a picture as to why we got into Sustainability 2050 and what its actual role for the city is. I want the city to be able to share its story of why that was important. So, Mayor, take it away.
Thank you, Councilwoman and council. If I were to ask each one of you here, what is the definition of sustainability? I imagine we would have several different answers of what this is. And so one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we did is we defined, we came up with an operational definition of what sustainability is, okay? And so I asked Quentin, our assistant to the city engineer-
Assistant engineer.
-from the Dwight Schrute title there, our assistant to Brian's assistant, to help with this particular presentation and show why we're reclaiming the word sustainability, and it's not a bad word. It is a good word. It is something that has been dragged through the mud, unfortunately, and has been referred to mean one or two different things, and it is not at all representative. And so- And so, we joined this Sustainable 2050 program last year, and I wanted to jump in and see why this is so important for the city to be a part of this. Really what it boils down to, sustainability is the vital balance between people, planet, and profit. That's what we're looking at in terms of trying, or putting up different litmus tests of what decisions that we need to make for our own operations. We're not coming after gas stoves, we're not coming after gas engines, we're probably going to have gas in our buildings, I'm sure we are. That's not the point here. We are about cost containment, leveraging, saving taxpayer dollars, saving utility dollars. So, if we look at these three areas, people are our human capital. What are we doing that improves physical, mental, and emotional health? What offers social, cultural, social and cultural experiences? And are they inclusive? When we start looking at the planet, this is our natural capital. And we heard testimony earlier about the two, the Owl Creek Conservancy and the Philander Chase Organization, who are committed, and great partners, by the way, we have a great partnership with certainly Owl Creek in the Wetland Project over on, of Blackjack Road, it's rolling off the tongue right now. And so there is a great deal in the region, I would say, to protect our land and our water streams. And so are we, when we, when we come up with decisions, are we promoting a stewardship of the land? Are we preserving natural resources for future generations? Mike, I can tell you want to go fishing right now when you look at that picture.
I was just thinking about salamanders.
Okay. We want to see more people out there in the rivers and streams fishing and everything. And then on the profit side, this is basically what we're looking at here. Are we pursuing solutions with the highest cost benefit ratio, benefit to cost ratio? Are we minimizing our waste? And are we maximizing our yield? And really, what is it coming down to that's, that's containing costs for us? This is how we're def, this is how we look at sustainability. And by the way, this is how Morpsy looks at sustainability, too. For some reason, it's been dragged, we've been dragged through the, well, certain news organizations that we are all about solar and wind, and that is not what we're looking at here. We'll probably look at local solar on our buildings, and we'll get into that. I've talked with other mayors around the state of Ohio, and they're saving upwards of $100,000 a year on their electric bill. As a taxpayer, that has my attention, very much so. But it's panels that go directly from the top of our roof into our outlets, okay? Anyway, let's keep moving, and I will just, I'm going to turn it over to Quentin here after this next slide here. But these are the Sustainable 2050 project, or goals, program goals through Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. We're looking at improving air quality and reducing climate change impacts to protect public health and the environment. That's a very general goal, that's not locking us into certain things, but this opens up a lot of opportunities here for us to find, by the way, what we feel are, is important for Mount Vernon and only Mount Vernon, okay? We are, we're concerned with our own 20 square feet, okay? That's what we're looking at. We want to protect and preserve our natural resources to support a healthy and resilient region. That's again, a regional goal. Improving quality of life for residents by creating sustainable and equitable communities, the whole notion of trail towns and our, our desire to be a trail town and the connectivity of bike paths. People want connectivity, and that comes in sidewalks, bike paths, multi-use paths. That's really, in the Morpsy region, in the 15, 15, 18, I can't remember how many, whatever the Morpsy region, the central Ohio region, there, right now currently is 230 bike paths, 230 miles of bike paths. And by 2030, there's, there's plans for 500 more. That's creating a sustainable opportunity for people to be able to get from point A to point B. If you're on the west end of town, where do you go to buy a gallon of milk?
I know this one, the Shell Station.
The Shell Station, where you are going to pay how much for a gallon of milk?
$8.50.
You're going to be paying a little more. If you want to go to the grocery store, guess what? You're walking in the streets, and if we just had a snow and it's just melted, you're walking through puddles. That is not acceptable. That is not sustainable. We want to make sure that people have equitable opportunities to get to our resources. And so bike paths, sidewalks, which by the way, were the top transportation infrastructure mentioned in our Phase 1 of our strategic plan, which is coming later. Anyway, and then finally, we want to promote a robust, inclusive, and sustainable growth and develop, growth and development plan. This is what we're talking about here. And so what does it mean to the city of Mount Vernon? What are we looking at? And then we'll get into why this is important to us. And counsel, I'll say it, I'll say it over and over, it is about creating leverage. If we can check a box that says we commit not only to the mission of the Philander Chase Corporation, the mission of the Owl Creek Conservancy, the active transportation policy that you all passed, the complete streets policy that you all passed, our parks master plan, our comprehensive plan through the county, and our strategic plan, and a regional sustainability plan, that little one extra puts us at the top of the applications for grants, which I would love to be able to pay for a lot of these projects with grant money, unless coming out of the taxpayers' dollars or the utility customers' fees. So anyway, Quentin, why don't you take it away and talk about some of the things that we were going to do, that now this puts us in a position where we can offer some different, now we can look for some leverage in terms of financing.
Thank you, Mayor Starr. Thanks for inviting me to talk about this. I'm just going to run through a little bit, as the mayor asked me, to explain what engineering's doing that I think is in line with the goals that are in front of you. So as the mayor explained, the Sustainable 2050 four goals come from the regional sustainability plan, and those goals are broken down into several objectives, which I actually, for your convenience, I made a table of some of my favorite projects we're working on and checked off which of those objectives I think these projects meet. So, one of, one of our favorite ones that we're working on right now, the Ohio EPA has mandated us in our current permit cycle to design and then start building treatment capacity for total phosphorus. So we have total phosphorus levels that we need to meet. So we've had a lot of research done, we've had a lot of tests taken from our treatment plant, and we currently are in contract with somebody, we're actually meeting with them tomorrow to discuss the current designs and go look at some other plants in the area. And one of the things that we want to do with that, obviously, is reduce the total phosphorus. If you're not aware, total phosphorus is a macronutrient that's really important for sustaining life, but it can be really detrimental in our surface waters because it leads to eutrophication and hazardous algal blooms, which Lake Erie has had a lot of in the recent years. We've had those in central Ohio as well, in some of our lakes and streams, and so we want to do what we can to reduce that, not only because we're mandated, but because it's the right thing to do. One of the other things we want to do is we want to improve our methane capture at the plant. So we're looking at ways to capture more methane from the digestion processes and then burn that methane to actually reduce the grid consumption of the plant. So if we can capture the methane that's produced and we can burn it, we can reduce the grid electricity that we're using from other sources. One of the other sort of innovative things we'd like to do is start accepting FOG. FOG stands for fats, oils, and grease, and that is something that's produced at virtually every restaurant here in town. All of them are required to have a FOG separator or interceptor, and at some point, they have to get that emptied out. And the closest place to do that right now is Newark. So if we can accept that locally, not only do we reduce the number of miles that are traveled by the haulers, but we also increase the amount of methane that we can produce at our plant and capture and burn. We want to reduce the waste and the operating expenses. One of the things that we have chosen to do with our upgrade is to stick with biological treatment. Basically, we were presented two options. We could stick with biological treatment, which is using what we call bugs or microbes to treat the waste, or we could try to incorporate or switch entirely to chemical treatment. And we decided that switching to chemical treatment was not the sustainable way to go because it requires us to continue to purchase chemical, chemicals to treat with, and then we also have to dispose of those. Whereas with biological treatment, the end product is actually something that farmers can apply to their field. And as part of this project, we're going to be improving the efficiency of the plant, so upgrading a lot of equipment, and hopefully just running it at lower electric costs and lower cost to the taxpayer.
You want to show them where the digesters are on the photo there?
Yeah, so our big guys there, those are our digesters currently, and...
No, it's down.
They have the reddish root, and these are holy pigs. These are the aerobic digesters, and this also has aerobic digesters, so we have two sets of digesters, aerobic and anaerobic.
And we're planning on reusing as much of the infrastructure as we can. We're not trying to build any new digesters, we're trying to rehab the ones that we have as much as possible. One of my other favorite, this is more of a program than a project, is our shade tree and beautification commission. So if it's a secret to anybody, I'll let it out right now, trees are really good for the environment for more reasons than one. One of my favorite reasons that a lot of people don't think of is they reduce runoff and they improve the quality of stormwater. So the water hits the trees, and some of it gets evapotranspired back up into the atmosphere instead of hitting the ground, and it also gets filtered out. The roots filter it out, the roots help retain soil, and they reduce erosion. They provide places for people to be and things for us to see, and this is part of the equity, social equity, or the people aspect of sustainability that the mayor mentioned. They were, our preventive maintenance program that we've been working on for several years now is reducing claims and damages. So, you know, when I was in high school, I remember every big storm that came through, it seemed like there were trees down everywhere, and I knew at least two people that had a car with a tree falling on it. And that seems to be a much rarer instance now, because the city has been very proactive about trimming trees or removing hazardous trees, and then replacing those trees with something that was maybe more appropriate or in a better spot, but to be less of a hazard. Our Tree City Partners Program, or what we call TCP, we've noticed that improving a lot of lives, this, thanks to the Ariel Foundation, we're not only able to plant in the tree lawn, but we can actually plant trees on people's private properties, because they are tax dollars going into this, they're grant dollars. So we get numerous people, and more every year, that are requesting trees to be planted in their lawn, and we see them brighten up every time they get their tree, because either they had to have one cut down because it was getting aged out, or maybe the previous owners just never thought to plant one. And, you know, $300 for a tree is a lot, especially with somebody who might be on a fixed income, and it can really improve the quality of their life, just having a place for the birds to sit and the squirrels to hang out, something to hang a feeder from. We definitely see this improving people's lives daily. It increases property values. Healthy trees increase your property value. So we want to plant as many trees as we can, because the property values of our town are very important to us. That's economic sustainability, right? And then large shade trees reduce cooling costs. They reduce the need for you to cool your house with an air conditioner, or they might also reduce the need for you to replace your roof or replace your insulation, because the heat can damage those things over time. One of the things that's somewhat debatable, but that I personally believe to be true, is that it can extend the life of the pavement under the right conditions. So asphalt pavement, if exposed to a lot of heat and drying out, can, I believe, last longer when it's in the shade, and I think Brian is of the same opinion as me on that, even though the jury's still kind of out on it. And our stormwater program, I don't think that needs much explaining. Really, everything we're doing with stormwater is for improving the water quality and reducing damages downstream. So we want to reduce flooding, we want to reduce the risk that somebody might have of having their personal property damaged or lost. We want to improve the overall quality of the Kukoczing River, which is not only for the fish and the animals that live there, but for the people who recreate there and go fishing and kayaking. And we want to reduce erosion and preserve our native topsoil. One of the items, I believe, on the, one of the objectives on the regional sustainability goals is to reduce the conversion rate of farmland, and part of that is because we want to preserve this topsoil, right? We need to have healthy topsoil to grow healthy plants. So by implementing stormwater regulations, we preserve this topsoil as much as we can. And because of our stormwater utility, we're able to start actually planning for the future of infrastructure. Instead of trying to catch up with infrastructure after it's built, we want to be able to plan stormwater before the infrastructure is there, so we can review plans better. We have consultants that can help us review our developers' plans, and we can go back and actually survey the infrastructure that's there and see what improvements we need to make to catch up with the years of development that happened before stormwater regulations were in place. So here's a bunch of other projects that are just honorable mentions, really, on our tire collection day that the mayor...
It's going to be March 30th, I don't know, did we get you, you have copies of that? I don't know, Sheriff, if we got you a copy of that yet. March 30th, it's going to be a tire recycling day in, through the county. We did receive a grant through Delaware, Knox, Marion, Marl County Solid Waste District. Not much, but they liked the fact that we have a sustainability program, and so they gave us, we're getting two bins, we're going to hopefully fill them up with passenger-sized tires. There'll be more information coming out on that, we'll have it on our website, social media and everything, but no rims. You bring rims, you're taking it back with you, and it's only passengers. You can bring in 10, first four are free, and then it's $1.50 each tire thereafter, tires five through 10. Anyway, that's, that's one of the programs that we're really happy to help out with the county.
And then our active transportation plan, that the mayor mentioned before, obviously, we're trying to replace sidewalk, trying to extend sidewalk, and we're trying to be a trail town, so encouraging people to get out and get around in a healthier way, reduce traffic, reduce emissions. Our State Route 13 project, part of this is actually not just improving the traffic, but reducing the elevation change in traffic. So currently on State Route 13, you have to go all the way up to the top of the hill, Chestnut Street, and then all the way back down to basically the same elevation you are at. With our new State Route 13 designation, we'll be able to only have a six-foot difference of elevation instead of a roughly 60-foot difference in elevation. So that's obviously a fuel savings, it's saving on the cost of fuel, and it's saving on the emissions that are going through town, and it's improving the traffic and helping traffic flow through town safer. Sanitary sewer infiltration elimination, it's another Ohio EPA mandate. Obviously, this helps us save money at the wastewater plant. The more, less stormwater that we get in our sanitary sewers, the less we have to try to treat at the plant. And at some point, we get overloaded at the plant, and then we have what we call overflow events. And an overflow event means that we are no longer treating the water that's coming in. So if it rains too much and we get too much stormwater in our sanitary sewers, you can imagine what's going into the river. So we want to try to eliminate that as much as possible. Our brick streets, at some point, city council decided that we wanted to keep and maintain the brick streets that were there, and from a sustainability perspective, that's actually a really good thing. The brick streets that we build now, we're expecting to last well over 100 years with very little maintenance needs. And as far as I know, the city has never had to purchase brick streets since they were, bricks for streets since they were originally installed. Is that correct? So at some point, we might have to, but we've been able to salvage all of the bricks that we've ever used, stockpile them, and reuse them on all of our brick street projects. So that reduces a lot of waste as far as the materials that we're using, being able to reuse them over and over and over again. And engineering, I wouldn't say policy, but one of our goals is to always try to use as many local vendors as we can. So the materials, we want to be sourced locally, it reduces time for shipping, it reduces delays, and then also we're able to build a better partnership with those vendors and sometimes get a better deal on things. So that's the economic aspect there. Proactive infrastructure maintenance and replacement, I think everybody here understands that if we fix things before they break, it saves us a lot of money down the road. So we've been actively trying to replace water lines, sewer lines, bridges, and trying to do it in a more sustainable way. The bridge that was replaced on Mount Vernon Avenue was widened to allow more pedestrian and bike traffic through. So it was repaired before it needed to be repaired, absolutely, it wasn't falling down, it wasn't, you know, blocked off from traffic, but we were able to get ahead of it before any major repairs were needed and entirely replace it. Our water treatment and distribution system, obviously trying to replace all of that, we're looking at the lead service lines right now, which is also a US EPA mandate, and hopefully we'll be able to give some insight to homeowners, so that if we do find anything, we can let homeowners know, hey, you've got an old galvanized line, you might consider replacing that, we know that they, after 50 or 60 years, tend to sprout leaks, and you might see some savings on your water bill if you replace this line. And also at the water plant, we need to add some insulation. So it's my understanding that part of the new building that was put in not too long ago, but long before I was at the city, didn't have any insulation, so we're hoping to add some insulation there and save on some heating and cooling costs, potentially adding solar panels on top of the roof. It's in a very sunny, open area, it's got a flat roof with a south-facing... It's got a flat roof with a south-facing end on it. And I think I'll let the mayor talk about his idea for a dual-fuel fleet as well.
We've been exploring the opportunity of going to dual-fuel energy systems for some of our fleet. We are not sure we can do that with the safety forces, but we certainly are going to look at public works and utilities with a combination of gas and compressed natural gas to see if we can just diversify our energy, what we use for energy. If we have a, if we have a problem with, if gas prices go way up, we can always go to our compressed natural gas, the Trillium Station down the street, and fill up down there. And so, you know, again, it diversifies. I think there's nothing wrong with energy diversification. I think there's a place for everything. And, and what that place is, is what, we're looking, what it means to us as an agency. We're not legislating any, anything to anybody. We are trying to contain costs and save money and stretch the utility fees and the tax dollars to improve quality of life, provide quality of life issues for our tax base and customer base. And so looking at dual-fuel as an option is something we're considering as well. We've had one meeting out with Ariel so far and that's the first of probably what will be many anyway. They are very willing to help us, as they are willing to help us out with the capturing the methane. They have a division that works with that too, so they can help us capture, clean and compress if we ever get to that, if we ever get to the level of need for that, which is not out of the realm of possibility, where we may need to clean the methane and compress it. So we've got, got Ariel right down the road, willing to help us out, so. And that's another local vendor. Okay, what are the benefits? Why are we really doing this? There is member recognition. It's one of the things that you do is you can, you get a chance to brag a little bit about yourself. We're, we're competing for business and development from other communities and so anytime we get a chance to build into the trophy case, hey, that's, that's a pretty cool thing to do. So there is, people in the region do pay attention to that. The peer exchange, this puts us right at the front of the table to be able to talk with people who have tried things and succeeded and tried things and miserably failed. And so we get a chance to hear those lessons learned as well as those great stories that are making a difference. Like I said, I talk with other mayors at least about five or six times a year and I always talk with them about what they're doing to contain their costs. And looking at, at, at energy diversification, just within their own operations, has been very, has been very important to them. And like I said, the one up north, they're saving $100,000 a year on their electric bill. And so I can think each one of your committees would find money for that in your respective departments to be able to put in other areas. Technical assistance, Morpsy will provide us with, will hook us up with technical assistance, get us in the, in front of the right people that can help advise us, including grants, finding grants for us to do that, which again, is something that is very important. Anytime we can get our federal tax dollars back in our community, or our state tax dollars back in our community, the better. We know that the Ohio EPA right now is looking very hard at water quality studies. With all of the growth that's coming down, that's coming before us, they are right now looking at the Sayota River, the Walhounding River, and the Licking River. It's only a matter of time before they come to the city of Mount Vernon, want to do Kukosing River, Erdox County. Guess what? That's what we call an unfunded mandate. Guess who's holding the bag for that? So we have to find ways to be able to pay for these things and by being a part of this program, we can say, hey, we're, we are part of the sustainable program. We'd like you to consider a grant, or we'd like to, like you to consider financial support for this study that we need to do on our tributaries and rivers and streams and fords and so forth. So getting technical assistance and getting in front of, getting in front of experts and grants is certainly great. And again, it's financial leverage. It checks a box that says, hey, we're not only, we're not only committed to these local initiatives, these local plans and so forth, but this is also part of a regional, this is part of a regional commitment to maximizing our development, eliminating, you know, eliminating the waste, getting, maximizing yield, cost benefit ratio, look, again, coming back to the people, the planet and the profit and finding that delicate balance. And we're looking at it within our own agency. We're not legislating anything to anybody, okay? Anyway, questions, Madam Chair?
Thank you for both of you presenting so well. That was really what I wanted, was the city to create their vision and put it out there. So I appreciate the hard work that you guys have.
One other thing, I'm sorry.
We need, we would really much like to create a sustainability committee and would love to have council's participation in that. So if it's okay with you, let's visit afterwards and come up with a plan for that. But we really would like to get some more stakeholder involvement. At this point, now that we've got a little bit, we've got much more of a direction and would really appreciate council's help on that.
I think that these goals are good for council to see and the objectives help us on other projects that we are moving forward on, so.
I'm old enough to remember when Buck Reinhardt was, was the mayor of Columbus back in the late 70s or early 80s and he was made famous for his power plant. As you drive down I-71, you look off to the left, you can see, it was methane or trash he was, what was it? Trash he was burning. And, and, and after several years, they had to decommission. I just want to make sure we learn from other people's mistakes to make sure that, that we don't replicate something that's already been done. And Buck Reinhardt was famous for the power plant and he was infamous after they had to decommission it. So we want to make sure we do our research well and, and understand.
That's why we're taking these tires. We don't want to see them end up in rivers and streams. We don't want to see them burnt. We don't want to see them in fields. And we don't want to see them become mosquito infestation stations. So, yeah.
We'll start with Jay first.
Yeah. Would it be okay if you came back? I have a question and thank you while you're coming for all your work and for your presentation. I think it's, it's fair to ask because the question is about the Sustainability 2050. Are these things that you would be doing anyway? And do you see a clear connection between Sustainability 2050 that the city joined last year and the things that you're already doing? So I guess I, just to be very specific, I'm asking for that clear connection between this organization and, and all the excellent things that I think all of us were excited about and for that you described. And then I have a follow-up.
Yeah, I think if the, if the engineering department is doing its job well, it will always be doing things with sustainability in mind. So regardless of what commitments the city has made or not made, we will always try to do things with the people and the profit and the planet in mind because that's kind of what our role is at the city. So as far as the utility side, we're always going to do everything to have a healthy community and do the minimum, least harm to the planet that we can. And because we don't have unlimited cash, we're going to try to stretch the dollar as far as we can in the most efficient way that we think we can. So I, I think that everything on that list is something that we would do regardless of the Sustainable 2050 commitment.
So what do you think, in your words, the advantage of this organization to us, to Mount Vernon is? I mean, I appreciate what the mayor said, member recognition, peer exchange. You're the one who's working with guys with shovels and stuff. So help us, you know, is this, from your perspective, the, I like to think of, some people like to think of 30,000 feet perspective, you're the three-inch perspective sometimes because you're, you're working right there. So tell us about this at the three-inch.
Yeah, so I don't have a lot of experience with the grants, but my understanding is that these types of programs play very heavily into grant scoring, depending on some grants. For example, the Safe Roster School Grant that we plan to apply for requires us to either have a, an approved active transportation plan or school travel plan. Thankfully, the county has an active transportation plan that's approved and we're part of that. And this is kind of one of those programs, it's my understanding, that can either be a yes or no on certain grant applications.
And we're also, we talk about stormwater. We've heard often over the last year from the West End folk, we're concerned about the levee and those kind of things. If I'm, am I correct in understanding that when you talk about stormwater, you also mean that the river, the levee, all of those projects?
Absolutely. There was actually a contractor down clearing invasive shrubs from the levee this morning. You might have seen them down there. While we had B-city people planting trees on the opposite side of the river from them.
Selling them.
So. And that was paid for out of stormwater funds.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Mike?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
You did well. That's always tough to be on the spot when your boss is sitting there. But, no, I just, Mayor, I, I agree that many words in today's society, sustainability, conservation, have been hijacked by a, by a different group of people that don't truly represent what those initial, what those, when those terms are created, they've gone off base. And I think that's some of the concern I know that I have and some of the city council. And since I've been on council, I've had community members ask me about, first thing they've asked me was about this sustainability study, how I thought about or stood on it. And I'm like, well, I was there when it happened. So this is very helpful to me. And I was thinking about fishing again as we go through these lines. Because as you know, I do deeply care about wildlife and parks. And, you know, just to, to add to that, and so that's one of the concerns I know that I have about this is that we're not tied to, you know, that Franklin County or other counties can say, Mount Vernon, you better do this or else. And we're not tied to that because I.
No decision that we do, this, this body would have to approve any decision.
Okay. And then I want to add is, you know, what you mentioned, the Walhounding?
Yeah.
If you think about where the Walhounding starts, it's here in Marl County. The Licking River knocks county drains into the Licking River, knocks county drains into Hoover Reservoir. So there's already rules and regulations that go, or what go with certain parts of the county. Because we're actually a part of the city of Columbus drinking water already, down around Centerburg, Halyer Township. Is that Halyer? I think I tell you down there. Yeah, so we're a part of all of that in this county. So anything that the city does to make and improve water quality is important. Plus, it's a state scenic river and it's one of the highest, the Kukosing River and many of its tributaries are some of the highest water quality in the entire state of Ohio with many endangered species that live in these counties. This was the spot the state of Ohio chose to reintroduce hellbenders in the eastern part of our county, which is downstream from our sewage treatment plants. So just as, that's the concern of, and a lot of those other organizations, they don't really care about that stuff when they hijack those terms. They only care about certain aspects of our energy development. So it's good to hear. And I also want to support, I know the engineering department, because I ask a lot of questions of a lot of people all the time. Actually, I'm probably make people irritated. But I learned a lot, you know, just by conversation, just about when the, the levee between the West Pond Foundation and the river was broken, how that was fixed and some of the thought behind it was for flood control. And then we had additional discussion about the east lake even, how that can all be designed to help make, keep our water quality and help the city deal with flooding, which all affects the levee system. So the engineering department does do a lot of effort and forethought on many things. I think that's why as council, we wanted to add some additional staff to the city because they do think of these things, it's just they need staff to make things happen. So I just wanted to add to that. But this was very helpful for me to hear this. And the biggest concern I think people have is, you know, like you say, we're not mandated to have to follow certain things, but you're saying it does help us get certain grants if we apply for them because we're a part of this organization.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
Well, thank you so much. I, I am done.
You were able to chew up a little bit at 30 minutes.
Oh, yeah. I knew that section would get us through.
Okay, we're going to move now, we're going to join the planning and zoning, Mrs. Keener. Going to move now to employing community relations with Mrs. Woods to discuss strategic plan phase two.
Thank you, sir. I was hoping I'd get a whole lot more of that extra 15 minutes now, but we'll work with what we got. So I had quite a few of you contact me with questions about the strategic plan phase two. So I put those all in an email, sent them to the mayor. So before we start, I just, we're going to be limited here on time and I'd like to leave the last five minutes. So if we can stop about 6:55 for questions. But real quick, if you just have something you really want him to hit on answering for you, because I know we won't be able to hit all those questions. Does anybody know anything specific?
Nothing specific. I want to, I think I want to hear what he says.
Okay, no? Yes?
Yes, my, my question really is, is this is phase two and there's, is, there's going to be a phase three.
Yeah, we're going to have to get into more, we're going to have to get into some measurers.
Right.
Measurements. And that's, I can, but the process, and by the way, this is, I have responses to each one of the questions in here, which I'll go through. How we started this out, phase one, we did not have, we did not have a mission statement, council. We never had a mission statement. We never had a vision statement. We never had a statement of values. We didn't have guiding principles. And then when we got started, we, we did do a great deal of stakeholder involvement. Several council members were involved at the time in 2021 who helped, were, were a focus group. Council had their own focus group. We had fourth and fifth graders. We had a general survey out to the public. We had a steering committee. We had the business community, the nonprofit community, educational community, a lot, a cross-section throughout the community on what should we be putting our efforts into. And the, the top five things in order of our marching orders and priorities were number one, police protection. Number two, fire and EMS protection. Number three, utility infrastructure. Number four, transportation infrastructure. By the way, majority of the transportation infrastructure was sidewalks. The kids said, I hate having mom and dad to stick me in the car and take me to the park. I want to ride my bike and I don't have to, and I don't have to ride it in the street. And then the last was economic development. And so if we're taking care of those first four things, that economic development kind of, kind of takes care of itself with a little bit of encouragement in other areas. And so that's where the stakeholder involvement, that's where council's involvement was in setting the direction. We had always been, we'd always been, we'd always said from the, from the beginning of the process, phase two is where our departments take that information, take that vision, that mission, which is to provide modern city services with an emphasis of continual improvement, customer service, and equitable laws that support our citizens and visitors while we retain and attract investment in the community. That's our North Star. That's what's guiding our decisions. It's general, but it's a direction that we can, that gives us a way to paddle in the same direction.
Okay, before you get, before you get started, did anybody else have any specific?
I just want to say, I appreciate all of that. I feel like we're, you know, phase one and two, I understand that. And knowing there's going to be a phase three where we're going to have, you know, accountability and performance indicators, you know, that we're looking forward to.
Yeah. And by the way, it's not going to be everything that's in here. And it's already, plan's already changing.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we, we have to pick, you know, you know what is important in an organization by what's being measured. And so we are getting more data-driven, we're getting more, we're getting more, we're looking at a lot of software to help do some heavy lifting for us, to give us some indications. I'm really excited to share the state of the city and show some of the measurements that we're taking and we're seeing some differences. It's giving us an insight. Go ahead.
Are we ready for anything specific?
No, I'm happy to hear phase three is where the accountability is because that was one of my bigger questions, is where's something to measure and look at? Because I've worked for agencies where you have a plan on the shelf and then the constituents and those stakeholders come back five years later and they're upset.
Yeah.
And they're like, why haven't you done something? And so, yeah, so I, that's, that was one of my major questions. I look forward to seeing all the questions that he has answered.
Okay.
Okay. May I?
Yes, absolutely. We got a bunch.
I'm sorry. You got me all fired up.
I'm sorry.
I asked in an email a week ago for a list of the stakeholders involved in strat plan phase two and a summary of what discussed, discovered. As of today, I've not received a response for me to make a decision. I need my question answered and would also like to know if any city council participated in phase two. Council, I apologize, but after I saw this, I scoured the emails and I cannot find anybody's response, anybody's question to me. I, it's buried somewhere. I apologize. Nonetheless, phase one was the timeframe when council and other stakeholders participated And that was, that's captured in the front part of the document, you see where phase one is. And then it was always from the beginning where, once we had the mission, vision, values, guiding principles, then that's for, we wanted to go to our departments and say, okay, this is what the stakeholders and the leadership has said is important. How can we put this into a little bit more, not entirely specific objectives, but certainly goal areas in your area, in your, in your department that are geared around safety, quality, and productivity? And so that's why you see some of those in there. Anyway, no, so no one from council was involved in phase two, and it was never intended to be that way. And then the next question was, I would like to, time period included, on a review of the plan in the future, maybe three years. And I believe having a plan and not following it, the public needs a way to see if the city is doing what it said. Yes, a typical strategic planning fashion, it is, it is a window between three and five years of where you're actually getting a chance to see if what your plans, what you're executing is actually working. So that's what we're looking at. We do have, I will say this, is my time up there? I'm sorry. We have a comprehensive plan with the county that is going to, is beginning this year. We've been asked to see if the city wants its own part of that. There will be a fee or a cost with that. It is something that this council will need to strongly consider. But given the fact that we have massive growth, maybe not massive growth, but certainly a significant amount of growth on the way, it might be worth a wise investment so that the city, city's going to play a very specific role in managing that. So that's something that wouldn't necessarily be part of the strategic plan, but it certainly would be something that you all would want to be a part of, I would imagine. Anyway, they're going to do the whole county anyway. And so we've just made a determination on the team that's going to be writing the plan and doing that, which will be a lot of meetings and stakeholder involvement and so forth. But our extent, there's going to be a cost with that. So we're going to have, Mrs. Keener would probably need to visit with Tanner and Terry and maybe Jeff Gottke to start coming up with what, how you want to proceed with that. Anyway, okay. The word equitable, equitable is overused, and a better word should replace it in today's world. This is an overused political word. Perhaps equitable is overused, but the notion set forth in the, in the statement really was about the equitable opportunities, having, having access to opportunities. So that wasn't, I think, it's not geared toward any quotas or anything like, it's equitable opportunities. Another question, who, from the city council representative that helped work on the document? Again, that happened in, in phase one. And occasionally, about once every two or three months, the executive team does get together, and we refer to that again. Mr. Hawkins is a part of the executive team. So he's, he's in at least a little bit on the, what is, if there are any updates to that, which there haven't been any until we got the budget, budget passed. We should be hiring the best people for the job and not implying we hire diverse people. I think it's great if we reach out to any and all people to search for the best. I have personally seen this word used to imply actually reaching out to other communities and government, not actually truly recruiting. Again, we agree, we should be hiring the best. In order to do so, we need to cast a wide net. And it's starting to pay off because now that we have an HR department and we are not just tied to the, a local newspaper for that, we have been getting a great deal of candidates. And in fact, we have a record number of applicants for the O and M tech position in our utilities, 19. We have not had 19 candidates to take a test in years.
We had three at the prior test.
Right. Aaron said we had three at the prior test last year. So that was due to a more robust ad search and getting on, I think it was, it was a sponsored link to- Indeed, indeed. So we've got our social media, we've got Indeed, we've got LinkedIn, we've got OML, we've got Morpsy, we've got Knox Pages. We've got all of these places that we're now starting to cast a wide net. We want to attract great talent from as many, as many places as possible. Okay, next question, let's see. Why are we already talking about a new fire station on the south side? The city has had one years ago and it closed down. We have not even built the second fire station. There's no need to discuss a third. That will not happen for 20 years. That's not necessarily true. The most recent fire study did say we needed to think about on the, the south end as well. The, the, the second station needs to go on the east end. A third of our calls are on the east end. And so we got to, we, we need to be, we need to be over there. But as we grow, as we gain more momentum, getting another, a third station, a substation over there on the south end is going to be important. The old fire station was substandard. It was not meeting standards, and therefore it was, years ago, it was decided to close that, consolidate and then, and sell it. And then recently, it's been turned in, it's been, the land bank bought it, and it's been turned over to owner occupied home. But we will have to be, it's, we're, we're having to build a courthouse and a fire station and everything else. So we're going to have to get, we're going to start thinking about this sooner rather than later about the third fire station. Not that we have to make many decisions, but we need to start getting it on the, on the, our, on our radar here. The nalox box was a question that was, is the nalox box open to anyone from the public access to access at any time? How will this be paid for? Some communities spend tens of thousands on this drug alone. My brother was saved by this drug many times. I question general free public access unrestricted use, shelf life, theft, are records to be, are records needed to be kept for state laws? This is a sample of the nalox box. This is how it is, this is how it's, it sits up in the different areas. It just is so, you break that, that key there and it opens up and you can get at the, whatever you need, whatever you need. There's a respiratory mask there as well as the Narcan. Narcan, this is an older one. It's, it's four, four milligrams of Narcan, and the newer ones have eight milligrams of Narcan because of the stronger stuff that's out on the street. So anyway, there's, this is a naloxone station that you see out in the different areas where they are right now. They are located in the municipal building in the foyer as you walk in. Also at the Riverside Recovery in Mount Vernon. Frederick Town and Danville have one as well. And probation department has eight more that they are looking to, actually, I talked with Dave Priest today. They want to get some input from the community as far as where those can go. But anyway, it's, it's paid for through grants. There is a project, it's a national project, Project Dawn, so there's no cost to us. The statistics, the QR code on the box, it has, if the person uses it, what was used. Each box is checked every two weeks, maintenance and checking with the businesses directly, or probation will go out and check on their own. Documentation is detailed and kept on file in probation. Naloxone has a two-year shelf life, so they're checking it all the time. It has been used, I think, a couple of times, once, somebody just wanted to get in and get the information, not necessarily the naloxone or anything else. We're also working with, oh, it's also paid for by grant from the Mental Health and Recovery Board for Licking and Knox County, another one of our partners. The, let's see, I can go on and on and on and on about that. But they'll be looking for, probation will be looking to meet with the community to see where these may need to go. The dog park was mentioned, not, not in the park's master plan since we've 86 that. And so obviously, hey, the Kansas City Chiefs had a game plan, but they had to make adjustments at halftime, didn't they? So anyway, we've already made some adjustments, and that's, that's the deal with that. The, so the dog park is not part of that, so we're pivoting and we're moving on to other things. Yes, we need partners, other partners like Area Corporation and the library, the splash pad, the annex, we work with the YMCA. And we also have, talking about Arrow Foundation Park options, we have a couple buildings over there that are heated year-round. And, but we need partners to help us with that as well. City needs to maximize its reinvestment on using local vendors. Hundred percent agreed. City should not allow any new buildings or developments or sidewalks are not included. If sidewalks are not included, I think some of the new developments approved currently do not require sidewalks. I may lean on our legal counsel, but if it's a private development and the streets are privately owned, we really don't have any say in, in whether or not sidewalks go in or not, or less, I would say.
I would say that right now, the rules for those totally private developments don't have any requirements for sidewalks. We certainly, I know that a number of them have added hiking and walking trails.
Right. It's more market-driven than, rather than required, though, at this point.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So if it's, if it's public streets, yeah. We tell them, hey, your fourth and fifth graders would like to have sidewalks, please. Let's see, I would like to see a list of prioritization of the major construction projects for the city in the next five years. We are working on that. We're working with, now that we're through the budget process, we can start and we see where things are falling. We will have that. It is something that we've, we've asked that we want to get done. A lot of projects are hitting all at once because things are breaking at once. And so priorities are all competing with each other. What's up with the old Glass Garden greenhouse? I've heard from residents on the west side about them getting visits from the city about issues on their own homes, and the old greenhouse looks horrible, makes the neighborhood look bad. This property was recently annexed into the city, my response here, but it still remains private property. Mr. B. Miller is aware of it, but he has received no calls. So if they would like to call, they can call him. It is something that is on his radar. He is planning to, he gave time for the property transfer, so he's on top of that one. My only concern is what this plan commits us to. Are they going to come back and say we have to pass legislation because it's already in the plan? I have no generals, just want to see what leverage it is. The notion of the plan is really, is to have a roadmap to follow. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to do everything we have set forth in the plan, but it does give us a starting point, and we can, we can move on that. And again, the word "they" kind of bothered me a little bit. It's not trying, we're not trying to create a "we" versus "they," administration versus council. But really, this is something that we want to work in tandem with, with you all, and I'll paddle in the same direction. Let's see. That's the same question there. Last two questions, I don't understand the difference between phase two and phase one. Hopefully, I explained that in the earlier part. And then the last thing was equitable needs to be removed, we need to hire the best. Equitable, in this case during the planning, refers to access to opportunities. So those are the questions that I received from Mrs. Woods. And, you know, hopefully this helps clear up a little bit of what we're doing. And yes, we do plan to bring a legislation to you. That does fall within the plans. That's, that gives us the direction. That gives, that gives us the, the information that we needed to hear from, from stakeholders and from council and from fourth and fifth graders and everyone in between as far as what direction should, what are our priorities? And I'm right over your, I'm sorry.
You did, that's all right. So based on that, do you guys still have questions you want to ask? What, I'm getting nods. No?
Oh. Explanation was good.
All right.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Are we done?
I'm done. Thank you. I know. We may need it.
Okay, we're going to get now into employing community relations with Mrs. Woods to discuss court wages.
Thank you, sir. So I had a couple of discussions and email extinct changes with the judge, and I asked him to come this evening because I know we had some questions about the increases that were requested. And I just want to make sure you guys get your questions answered because this is the third reading tonight. So Judge, do you mind? So I know one of the questions was, you know, the verbiage that we're going to vote on had wages, but it was unclear what those increases were. And I know, having talked to you, they differ for people.
Right, if you, they differ for each person. And one of the employees included in one of the ordinances is being moved from a full, part-time to a full-time position. So that's going to affect the dollar amount of increase. But even that full-time position is going to be funded 50% out of probation services funds, which are paid for by, by the probationers that are supervised.
And I know when we spoke, there was a person who had gone and gotten some additional creditations or certificates that you said you were trying to wrap into her, that salary.
Oh, you're talking about the clerk of court.
Okay.
We've got the clerk of court tonight, Lisa Mazza. Lisa Shaw's probation officer. It'd help if you raised your hand so they know. Joel Carter, probation officer. Next to Lisa is Pat Claproot, he's a security officer. Susie Isles is probation officer. In the back is Tom Brown, court security director. And of course, Dave Priest is the chief probation officer. You're talking about Lisa Mazza, who got accepted into the National Center for State Courts Certified Court Administrators Program, which is a competitive process. It's administered through the Ohio Supreme Court. And I believe it would be the first time a clerk of court for the Mount Vernon Municipal Court completed a certified court administrator program.
So we have him here. Does anybody have any questions?
Just one.
Thank you.
So I, because I read all your stuff, and I appreciate your comparables. I think you did a really good job of what cities municipalities compared to. And from what I remember reading here is, is it the clerk of court? You had someone of job vacancy and they've been doing the work of two.
Yeah, in the last 10 years, we have not filled two deputy clerk positions that were vacated by retirement and one by moving on to a different position. So we assigned more duties to the deputy clerks without refilling those positions.
Okay.
Boy, you guys are quiet tonight. Everybody has all their questions answered before we vote this evening. I appreciate your email communications. I appreciate you guys being here this evening.
If I could-
Absolutely, please do.
The reason I gave you all that information is because two weeks ago, I came here without knowing what the objection was. And the Clements Nelson compensation study was mentioned, which, I don't know what stage that's in, but in, in the last two weeks, just by emailing judges, I was able to get the information. But keep in mind, this is, you know, eight or nine courts in different cities around the state. They're comparable in terms of population and caseloads. But really, I think the decision that you're making tonight needs to be defined this way. You're not making a decision to fund a subservient department of the city like you do in all other decisions you make. You're the legislative branch making a decision to fund a co-equal branch of government, the judicial branch. And I'm standing here accepting the authority and the responsibility to back up my opinion about what the court employees are worth and how they're needed to reasonably run an efficient court. I think there's a reason why this is the first time in my 20 years' experience as an elected official, nobody's ever questioned a court's budget because it is a different type of process. I, as a prosecutor, I never questioned the common police court's budget. I don't know of a prosecutor that ever has. I don't know of a law director that's ever questioned the municipal court's budget. So what I would like you to do is, when you make your decision, whatever it is, please articulate the basis for your decision so I know what your thinking is, because I think that's important. It was mentioned two weeks ago that although the higher revised code gives you the authority to decide what the compensation for these positions would be, it's not the only law that applies. Because judges do, even municipal court judges have inherent authority to make sure that the courts are running efficiently and that they're reasonably funded. What reasonably means, that's not my job, because that's your job as legislative authority to decide what reasonable is. But I'm saying, based on my experience as a judge and prosecutor for 20 years altogether and a lawyer for 35 years, and my knowledge of other judges and courts and how they're run, I think you've got one of the best courts in the state. You've got one of the best staffs back there that I've ever worked with. You have more experience back there than any court that I know of altogether. And they're, they're doing transformative work over there in the municipal court. We're not just pushing cases through and closing cases. We're changing people's lives, and it takes experienced people to do that. And they deserve to be fairly compensated. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, you guys have no other questions. That's all, sir.
Hey.
Thank you.
We're going to adjourn that committee meeting. We're now in recess until 7:30 PM. We begin the legislative portion of the meeting. If anybody, audience, wants to speak of matters of public concern, please let the clerk know. So we can call on you, we get to that portion of the meeting. We get to that portion of the meeting.
Zoom. You could zoom.
Yeah.
(laughing).
It's now seven thirty P. M. Going to call the Legislative Person, the March twenty-sixth meeting of Mount Vernon City Council to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Siebel.
Here.
Mr. Severance.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Mr. Ruckman.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Rick Grumlich from the Proclamation Church. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
If you would, pray with me. Almighty and sovereign God, we call upon you and bless your holy name. You are good and righteous and worthy of all of our praises. We thank you this day for the gifts that you have given us, for the breath in our lungs, our hands to work with. May we stir these well for your glory and for the good of our neighbors. We thank you for the blessing to live in this land governed by neither tyrants nor mobs, but by the rule of law. Thank you, God, for the liberty and opportunity that we have. Thank you for those who serve our community diligently and with integrity, working to prosper our community, that we may bless those around us. God, we thank you for the gift of the government, the institution that you have given us. Thank you for the blessing it brings, the prosperity that it can bring to nations and to people and to communities. We thank you graciously, gracious heavenly Father, for those who serve in this government. Give them wisdom and humility and courage, for as much as they labor to do what is right, they are honoring you and blessing our community. We thank you, God, for the hope that we have in you, in that you can save us from our sins, and that you through the work of Jesus Christ can redeem us. May we praise you and glorify you for this. May we rest in you. Now may you bless this meeting, we pray. We pray this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, in your packets are the minutes from the February twelfth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So move. Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There is one communication. This is a letter. It was emailed to counsel late this afternoon and also hand-delivered to the clerk. It is from Bruce Malik of the Twenty-Five Dixie Drive. It is dated today. This is regarding Edgewood Road Improvement Funding, or Resolution twenty-two-four-twenty-three. The council members have received this by email, and he asked that this be put into the record officially.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, you can see that there are several committee reports in your packet. I see new liquor control licenses. We do have a couple proclamations. I'll turn that over to Mr. Mahan.
Thank you, sir. I'm not additioning for Mr. Hill's job. I will do the best I can, but I have a couple proclamations to read from counsel. The first is congratulating Patrolman Justin Trowbridge, Mount Vernon Police Department, twenty-twenty-three Officer of the Year. Whereas, Mount Vernon's law enforcement officers provide a vital public service in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens, wear the uniform and badge with pride, and are dedicated to protecting our families, homes, and communities. And whereas, Justin Trowbridge, who is a full-time patrolman with the MVPD since two thousand four and since two thousand twenty-two, a traffic safety officer, has fully exemplified those values. And whereas, as traffic safety officer, Justin's advanced training in crash investigations has enhanced the department's effectiveness in handling complex situations within the realm of traffic management. And whereas, Justin's judgment and professionalism have helped make the city's streets safer, especially in those neighborhoods surrounding our school zones. And whereas, in twenty-twenty-three alone, Justin's productivity and drive resulted in ten thousand and ten arrests, one hundred and ninety-nine crash reports, and six hundred and ten warnings issued. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Mount Vernon Mayor Matthew Starr and the Mount Vernon City Council do hereby congratulate Patrolman Justin Trowbridge on being named the Mount Vernon Police Department Officer of the Year for twenty-twenty-three. And congratulations to Patrolman Trowbridge. And I was reminded that that is a peer-selected award, so his fellow officers, who have known him since two thousand four and has seen everything he has done since then, selected him for that award. Congratulations. I also have proclamation congratulating Eric Rutter, Josh Lester, and Kevin Lisbon, Mount Vernon Fire Department, twenty-twenty-three firefighter, Officer of the Year, and EMS awardee. Whereas, Mount Vernon's firefighters bravely face possible injury and even death in the performance of their duties, working long and unusual hours to safeguard the lives and property of the city's residents. And whereas, firefighter Eric Rutter has shown a great deal of leadership, not only in the last year, but over the course of thirty-two years with the Mount Vernon Fire Department, and is always eager to listen to new ideas. And whereas, Fire Captain Josh Lester has dedicated a great deal of time towards training, is team-oriented, and is always focused on the growth and well-being of his team. And whereas, firefighter paramedic Kevin Lisbon consistently provides patients with the highest care and utmost respect, and has received numerous compliments from the public. And whereas, Eric, Josh, and Kevin all consistently follow the MVFD's mission, vision statements in everything they do. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Mount Vernon Mayor Matthew Starr and the Mount Vernon City Council do hereby congratulate Eric Rutter on being named the twenty-twenty-three Mount Vernon Fire Department firefighter of the year, Josh Lester on being named the twenty-twenty-three Officer of the Year, and Kevin Lisbon on being named the recipient of the Dr. Tracy Shermer EMS Award. I received an email from the chief. Those gentlemen are not with us this evening, but they appreciate counsel, the recognition. And I received information from the, similar from the fire, the police department, that they appreciate counsel recognizing their Officers of the Year. Thank you.
We appreciate their service.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We now move to a person speaking of matters of city concern. I've turned this over to, do you first, Mel, and make a comment, and then we'll get into the person speaking.
Yes, it looks like we have at least two people named to speak on Resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-three. We will be very strict on the four-minute limit this evening, if you are going to plan to speak on that. And the reason why I want to do that is that I can tell you in advance that we will just be giving this a first reading tonight. So it is, there's, if there's been any rumors about this being pushed through, it's not going to happen. It's going to be given a first reading tonight. And then I want to go ahead and let you know that on Wednesday, March sixth, we will have a public meeting in this room from six to eight. So there will actually be, if there are enough people to run that meeting from six to seven, then we would clear the room, and from seven to eight, we will have it on Wednesday, March sixth, in this room, okay? So that'll be a public meeting, and you can get up and speak to your heart's content that evening. There won't be any rebutting or anything. It's just going to be listening to input specifically on this Edgewood Road project.
All right.
So the first person, you want to go ahead and call?
The first person speaking is Dennis Swingle. Dennis, please come up and state your name and address.
Remember, your comments are four minutes. My name is Dennis Swingle. I live on eleven oh-one East Chestnut Street, corner of Edgewood and Chestnut, for forty-six years. I'm speaking tonight because of Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-three. Via Resolution twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-three, the city administration seeks approval to use federal and state funding to alter, widen, and extend Edgewood Road. Emergency approval is sought without documentation or details. Counsel is asked to approve a path to funding without documentation or details defining the changes that would be made to Edgewood Road and Highland Park neighborhood. For more than five years, on behalf of our neighborhood, I have asked Mr. Ball repeatedly by both phone and email to share concept drawings and other engineering details with me, a capital planning engineer. The answer I keep getting was there is no active project to improve Edgewood Road. Just five weeks ago, after extensive discussions of altering Edgewood Road at the January twenty-fourth budget meeting, I asked Mr. Ball to meet with me, and he said he was too busy. So I asked if I could come in and just look at the engineering drawings, and his response was the drawings were not available at that time. Additionally, at the Utilities Commission meeting on February first, Mr. Ball set the basis for calling the proposed project an emergency. There, Mr. Ball stated that Columbia Gas had announced an emergency situation on Edgewood Road, a failing gas line, and the need to produce, to proceed immediately to replace that gas line from Route two-twenty-nine Gambier Road to Route thirty-six Kachakton Avenue. Apparently, Columbia Gas is his reason for moving the Edgewood Road project forward as an emergency. We have information from two separate sources, both of which communicated directly with representatives of Columbia Gas, who stated that the lines on Edgewood Road were going to be replaced within the next few years as part of routine upgrade of existing gas lines. One of the Columbia Gas representatives, Ben Cutler, further confirmed in writing with the following statement. Number one, the line on Edgewood Road is old and in need of a timely replacement. Item two, at this point, Columbia Gas is planning to replace in the line in twenty-twenty-five as part of a broader project called Edgewood and Merida. Please understand that timing is always fluid. The line, item three, the line is currently, in capital letters in his email, not in a dire street. However, we are always monitoring for leaks, corrosion, and other weaknesses. As of right now, we are replacing lines in the Lawn, Duke, and Vine area of, west of Edgewood. This area was originally scoped into the larger project, but could not wait for replacement due to regular write-offs. And item four, those within the Edgewood and Merida project, those people living within the Edgewood and Merida project will be noted before any broad replacement is initiated. These were all confirmed by email from Mr. Ben Cutler with Columbia Gas, just within the last couple days. If Columbia Gas has an emergency situation on Edgewood Road, as it does elsewhere in the city, where is the documentation of that fact? If documentation of an emergency in the gas line on Edgewood Road exists, now would be a good time for the city to produce it. And finally, Resolution twenty-two-four-twenty-three is an attempt to get the city on board in stealth mode to support a project without any construction plans, drawings, or proper engineering descriptions, and without public input. It would be in the best interest of the public, the city council, and especially the residents of Edgewood Road area, to see such plans, drawings, et cetera, so there could be engineering details be made public before city council votes on Resolution twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-three. Resolution twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-
Your time is up, Mrs. Swingle.
Pardon?
Please conclude. Your four minutes are up.
I'm, got one sentence.
Okay.
Before, okay. Resolution twenty-two-four-twenty-three should be tabled pending full disclosure of the details of the proposed alteration of Edgewood Road.
Thank you, Mrs. Swingle.
And I have one question. Everybody who's here who found out on short notice, I mean really short notice, that this was going to be up for the first reading tonight, and is interested because of Edgewood Road, and their interest of what is really going to happen, would they please raise their hands?
Oh, good.
Thank you.
That's why we have that special meeting on March sixth. We want to have people come, make it very transparent. Okay. Next speaking is Richard Spout. Please state your name and address.
Since we've just learned about the March meeting, I'll withhold my comments until a later date. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, we have Tammy Swingle.
I'm Tammy Swingle, and I live at 1101 East Chestnut Street. And I'm sure there are some of you that are unaware of the long past history of this Edgewood Road issue. The main message I have for the Mount Vernon City Administration and City Council is the residents of Edgewood Road and the surrounding streets as a whole are against the widening and extension of Edgewood through to Koshakton Avenue. At the request of a group called Edgewood Alert, we have petitioned the city on numerous occasions, beginning in the 1970s, in various ways, asking the city to properly prepare for the uncontrolled commercial expansion of eastern Koshakton Avenue. Back in 1990, a petition with approximately 440 signatures, that was 22 pages of signatures, was presented to the city. The petition said, "We petition the city government to place a moratorium on all further commercial development along Koshakton Avenue and Yager Road until this city provides a safe southerly route beyond the eastern edge of the city." A more recent petition was presented by Edgewood Alert back in July of 2017. Briefly, we petitioned the city to reduce traffic concerns in the Edgewood Road neighborhood. That petition had approximately 46 signatures of people living on streets, including Edgewood Road, East Chestnut Street, Verndale Drive, East Vine Street, East High Street, and Stevens Street. The petition statement is, "Edgewood Road and connecting streets have become a cut through for traffic. This has led to an increase in high traffic volume, noise, and accidents. Car speed between stop signs, run stop signs, and cause safety concerns on our residential streets with our zoned R1. Ever since the bridge was installed crossing the Kukosin River on Mount Vernon Avenue Extension, the city administration has continually pushed plans to make Edgewood Road a thorough fair and connecting it with Koshakton Avenue. Way back then, there were at least five different routes available to fulfill the request in the 1990 petition. This was before Mr. Baker's housing development was built. One by one, these open options went by the wayside. The final option considered by the city in 2019 looked at what would have been the solution to all of our requests over the 46 years I have lived on Edgewood Road. The city called it Upper Gilchrist Road Extension. However, that option was rejected by the city because only one person stood in the way. Mr. Swetlick owns vacant land the city would need to buy for right-of-way, and Mr. Swetlick said no. That was that as far as the city administration was concerned. Going back over all the time I have referenced, petition after petition, the city is still pursuing a solution using Edgewood Road as the underhanded inner belt, even though most of the residents of Edgewood Road are saying, "No, you are not going to take my property." Thank you.
Thank you. Again, there will be a meeting on, on March 6th that will be in this room. We've kind of divided that meeting into two portions from, in case there's so many people here, if there's too many people to, for seating in this room, I'll have a meeting from 6:00 to 7:00. And then we'll clear the room, and more people can come in from 7:00 to 8:00, in case there are so many people coming to speak, that we can't offer them the room of the Fire Marshal. We had a meeting a few months ago where the Fire Marshal had to limit the number of people that can be here by his code. So we want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak, and, and, and that's the way it will run. Maybe we, you could all fit in here from the whole 6:00 to 8:00. But if not-
Time's up, Bruce.
Is that?
Time's up, Bruce.
My time's up.
Mr. President.
Sorry about that.
Mr. President, could I ask that administration present maybe just simply some drawings or a one-page paper, kind of walking council through some of the thinking for this, so that council can have a bit more information to move forward?
Counsel, I will, and residents, I will work with the engineer and with other members of the administration, and we will produce a one-sheet with some drawings and mockups for the community to internalize before that March 6th meeting. So you'll have something to look off, something firm, that way we're all speaking the same language here before we discuss this. So we want, we want transparency from, you know, this council, this administration, and with the community. We're all in this together, if you will.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And so it's clear, phase one of this will be from Gambier Road to High Street. And that will be phase one. Phase two then may be extended further, but, but phase one we've already discussed, and it only, it only goes from Gambier to High Street. But all that can be discussed at that meeting on the 6th. Thank you for your input, and hopefully we want to keep that open for the public to, to make their comments. Now we move to the legislative portion of the meeting. Counsel, you have the legislative packet before you. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all soon was approved by consensus, and we'll move now to a resolution for third reading. The first resolution is resolution 2024-11, Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-11, a resolution adopting phase two of the City of Mount Vernon Strategic Plan as a statement of the city's values and guide for future legislative and administrative priorities.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I move to postpone resolution 2024-11 to the March 25th, 2024 meeting.
Second.
And moved a second that this resolution be postponed until March 25th. Any discussion?
I, I made this motion because there's still some questions, and if you will, you can contact me. I think it'd be much easier just contact the mayor, get your questions answered, so we can act on this. I wanted to get plenty of time for everybody to get ahold of him, get those questions answered.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
This resolution is postponed until March 25th. We have no resolutions for second reading, we have several for first reading. The first one is resolution number 2024-22. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-22, a resolution to donate surplus city property to another public entity and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-22 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And moved a second for the suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-22.
Second.
And moved a second for adoption, this resolution in discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Who's going to talk to this? Are you Mr. Tanner about this gazebo?
I can, or you can? I think it's pretty simple.
Oh, or, Mr. Born?
Yeah, we're just fighting all over it.
Okay, you guys fight about it.
Yeah, so there is a gazebo over at Riverview Park, former Rotary Heritage Park. This is next to the Sunset Swings and the pavilion down there. Because of the AEP easements that will be coming in those power lines, and that shift, we cannot have those structures remain there. We are finding new locations for those Sunset Swings. That's being hammered out with the Foundation Park Conservancy, the city, and the donors that made those available. This particular structure, I think, was originally over where the Dog Fountain is now. It moved over to the park, and now we're kind of all doing this. But Mr. Gocky and ADF said that they would happily take it and home it over at Heartland Commerce Park for when that, that place starts generating a lot of foot traffic with all the folks that will be working over there. So since it is over this $1,000 limit, we have to, as it's city property, surrender it and donate that.
Didn't you rent it out beforehand? Wasn't it, it was never ran out for anything, so it was never a source of revenue?
No.
The scrap value is more than $1,000 on the metal.
So is there any questions by anybody here?
There is one change in, in the original legislation.
We fixed it.
It's that vehicle.
Yeah.
And now it's not.
Yeah, we got that, we caught that earlier.
If you would like to drive it, feel free, but we will send a cop over there, so.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-23. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-23, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation and improvement of Edgewood Road, KNO CR 63A 0.00, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, I'd like to give this a first reading tonight, and Mr. Hill, I'd like a 15-minute committee meeting on March 11th, please.
This resolution receives its first reading. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-24. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-24, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills from 2023 and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-24 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And moved a second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-24.
Second.
And moved a second for the adoption, this resolution in discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Mr. Scott, Miss Mount Vernon overhead door wants $680?
Yes, ma'am, we have an old bill from 2023 using current appropriations. Therefore, that requires council's appropriations to make that payment, $680. We appreciate this support for council.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I ask a question, did we not pass something that gave you the ability to do this under, is it because it's last year's?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-25. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-25, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to section 5705.41D, then and now certification.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-25 to its third and final reading.
Second.
And moved a second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution number 2024-25.
Second.
And moved a second for the adoption, this resolution in discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, now we got $79,938.80, then and now.
Yeah, we have three and then and ands here, counsel. One is the IT contract with Knox County Commissioners for $75,000, and we have that rectified for our next six months window, so we won't have this commend, this accommodation again. And then on number two, for the American Electric Power for about $3,400, utilities out of the utility department, water, water plant, and Bricker and Grayden for legal services of $1,440, other legal duties as well. And those are pending for payment. Mrs. Seville, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution number 2024-26. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-26, a resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to act as the city's agent to apply for Safe Routes to School SRTS funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation, and authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract if funds are awarded, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-26 to its third and final reading.
Second.
We moved a second for the suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-26.
Second.
And moved a second for the adoption, this resolution in discussion. Mrs. Seville.
Mr. Tanner, we're talking about the middle school, high school, and Knox County Career Center.
Yes, this is that whole corridor on Martinsburg Road where we have been committed to making it safer to walk to schools. So this is that Safe Route to Schools grant that we can start leveraging the cash that we are putting into that area, so we can get some sidewalks on both sides of those streets. Started looking at the crossing signals, we've looked at crosswalks, got the, the speed zone in place now that we can properly enforce that, so this is part of that comprehensive approach to doing those things. But being able to get in and apply now for this grant will help us get those outside monies and bring them in here, so we don't have to drain the Mount Vernon's, Mount Vernon's tax revenues.
Application is also due on Friday.
Six hundred thousand dollars, so that's a lot of money.
Yes, the, yeah, the application is due now, so I appreciate the suspension of the rules.
March 1st, it has to be in by, so that's why we gotta hurry.
Appreciate you.
And $600,000 is a lot of money.
That's a lot.
That's fantastic.
Any chance we'll have those signs that tell you what speed you're going, like you do in other places?
I'll work on it.
Jeez.
I got one out in the car, so.
You really need these, don't you, Mr. President?
They are helpful. No, no, slow me down when you see those signs.
Any other questions? We have Bruce taking care of.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Final resolution for this evening is resolution number 2024-27. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2024-27, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations. the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number 2024-27 to its third and final reading.
Second?
And moved in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Rule suspended. Mrs. Seville?
I move to adopt resolution number 2024-27.
Second?
And moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. Now we're talking about $430,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Seville. And council, you have CDBG program from the Ohio Department of Development has awarded the city $430,000, as you can see, for line improvement and extensions, which is actually working in the Stump Street area of Clutton Township general area as well, and partway as the Buckeye Edition as well. So, this is, our consultants from CDBG program has helped garner these dollars to get those new water lines put in. Up in the Stump Street area and Northview, all of that is really in the need for being renewed or just being new, because a lot of those people in that general area don't have regular public water as they have in for wells and stuff forth. Septic tanks will also be a part of this program as well, and that will ban those people's septic tanks once we get through that program. That was a grant that I brought to you about a month ago to pair up with this program. So, we're doing, we're leveraging monies between ourselves and Clutton Township. It's been a great partnership, and it will certainly help us and our utility systems as we advance forward. Thank you, Mrs. Seville.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. We now move to ordinances. The first ordinance is ordinance number 2024-04. 01, sorry. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance to accept the vacation of an undeveloped platted alley in the City of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-01.
Second? And moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Keener?
I think that we heard from individuals that have brought this forward and that it passed our municipal planning commission, and I think that we've had a lot of discussion on it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2024-02. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-02, an ordinance to accept the vacation of an undeveloped alley in the City of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-02.
Second? And moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion?
Again, this is another one that passed municipal planning, and we heard from those around this particular alley. I think we're ready to go on this one.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2024-03. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-03, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
One second.
Okay.
Mrs. Woods?
Move to adopt ordinance 2024-3.
Second?
And moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion?
I have a question. Which one are we adopting?
So, hold on, that's what we're going to discuss. So, we each just received an amended version. My first question is-
You were emailed it on February 22nd.
Yes.
But that's not what's in our packet.
No. No, this is, this is the addition, these are the other numbers the judge referenced in previous correspondence, and then Mr. Hill on February 22nd emailed all of this to every member of council.
Okay, so-
Well, he forwarded the judge's email.
So, then I'm going to ask Terry, have you seen this amendment? Can we get him a copy, because I want to ask a question? So, what's amended, what's in our packet is for chief probation officer, senior probation officer, and then just probation officer. This amendment just has probation officer one and two, and this came from-
Judge.
The judge, okay. And we're okay to split it that way. So, then I'm going to make an emotion to amend ordinance 2024-3 to what we were handed here.
Yes.
Second?
And moved in second for the amendment to this ordinance. You want to read the wording and-
Sure. So, the senior probation officer one for $27.47 has been amended to probation officer one, referenced now as a new hire, at $22 per hour with an additional 50 cent increase with completion of the 180-day probationary employment period for the effective date of hire payable from CCA funding grant 2023 through 2025. Probation officer two changes from $26.88 to $27.47.
It's been moved in second to amend this ordinance. Any discussion on the amendment?
Still a little confused, as far as, because is this, does that still leave the senior probation officer one at 27?
No, that-
It has been removed.
To regular probation officer.
Regular, and that's all with discussion with the judge, judge approving?
That's what we're going to discuss as soon as I get it on the floor.
As soon as you get it on the floor, okay.
So, it is on the floor, right?
It is on the floor.
Did we get a second? I apologize. Okay, I apologize.
Any discussion on the amendment?
So, technically, then, we don't have senior probation officer one, what we're reading on our screen at 27.47, it's actually less money for just a probation officer at $22 per hour. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And then the second probation officer two was 26.88, it's now 27.47. So, it's actually less money. That's quickly doing math in my head. That would be less money than what that was previously known to us.
But this is what the judge recommended?
Yes, and I'm good with it.
Any other questions?
This amended thing is what the judge recommended?
Yes. He emailed, that is what he-
This is what he has recommended. Okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Amendment is adopted. We're now back to ordinance number 2024-03 as amended. Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-03 as amended.
Second?
And moved in second that this ordinance as amended be adopted. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods?
No, I think we're good.
Yep.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller? Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2024-03. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-04.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, four, I'm sorry.
Yes. An ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-4.
Second?
And moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods?
I just want to confirm that what's in ordinance 2024-04 is the judge's recommendation. Yes, thank you. Any discussion on this one? I think we're good.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2024-05. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-05, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance 2024-05.
Second?
And moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. Same question. What we have in our packets, what's recommended by the judge? Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2024-06. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-06, an ordinance fixing the compensation and benefits of certain employees of the Mount Vernon Municipal Court effective January 1, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. I move to amend ordinance 2024-06.
Second?
Want me to read what I'm amending?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, Section 2, Merit Drug Court Coordinator currently reads $28.53 per hour, of which $1,337 will be payable from Mount Vernon General Fund. That is changing to $25.68 per hour payable from the City of Mount Vernon General Fund Probation Department. And the $15.16 per hour payable from the General Fund shall be changed to $2.85 per hour payable from CCA fund grant 2023 through 2025.
Any discussion on the amendment? We have a second, so any discussion on the amendment?
So, again, we got this tonight, and this is what the judge is recommending.
Well, actually, it was sent on the 22nd, everyone.
I, okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. We have no ordinances for second reading.
That was amended.
We just went on the amendment.
I'm sorry. The amendment has been approved, and now we're back to ordinance number 2024-06
as amended.
I move to adopt ordinance 2024-06 as amended.
Second?
And moved in second that this ordinance as amended be adopted. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods?
Any other questions?
Wait, this is, because we asked again for a reason, because it changed tonight. This is what the judge recommended, right? Again, yes. Okay.
Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
The ordinance as amended is adopted. Have no ordinances for second reading. We now move to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 2024-07. Mr. Hill?
Ordinance number 2024-07, an ordinance to amend section 111.08 of the codified ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon regarding standing committees of council and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Keener?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2024-07 to its third and final reading.
Second? And moved in second for the suspension of the rules and a discussion on the suspension. Mr. Hill?
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Severance?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?